Let us to the prayer for the blessing of this evenings. Especially for God's charity we have praise the Lord in the stand God was God's heaven who is now mixed. God has brought him safely in your midst and let us thank God for this wonderful evening that God has given to us to worship God Almighty. Hallelujah. [speaking foreign language] Their souls spent some time in praising God, giving thanks unto his holy name and hallelujah praising his name, hallelujah. Praise in the name of our Lord, hallelujah, the one who is worthy of our worship and praises, hallelujah. Let us give thanks unto his holy name, hallelujah. Let us thank God for making this evening possible for us to be in the presence of God, worshiping him, hallelujah. Glorifying God's holy name, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. We worship the Lord, we praise your holy name, hallelujah. Thank you Lord for this time. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Let us thank him for his holy name, hallelujah. Let us be in the presence of God with the heart of Christ in you so that God perform all those things that God has done in our lives. Hallelujah, all the blessings, all the promises. Hallelujah, hallelujah. All through our last one week, oh God has kept us safe under His mighty wings. And God has given us this opportunity to be in the presence of God once again to worship his name, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen, praise the Lord, hallelujah. [speaking foreign language] In the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we are so glad and excited this evening to be in the presence of God. Hallelujah, this is the first of all who is here and it is our desired prayer for a couple of months since Deutcher has come to him, he has to come here and fellowship with us at this evening that is made possible by our God Almighty. So let us thank God for this wonderful evening. [speaking foreign language] We are going to sing songs and praise God for the next couple of weeks. Let us all be in the presence of God in a magnitude of worship.
Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. We would like to thank everybody who has come over here today on the Saturday night to worship his name. Saturday night, what is due says, "Give unto the Lord the glory and beauty of his name, worship the Lord and the purity of his holiness." We worship the Lord because he gave us an opportunity to have him as our God, our Savior, our King and our Father. And we thank him for all the blessings that he brought up into our lives. So I think that's all he can do is to join us and sing this song, Light of the World. Praise God.
Light of the world, you step down into darkness. Open my eyes, let me see. Beauty that makes this heart adore you. Hope of the light that reigns you. Here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. All together lovely, all together worthy. All together wonderful to me. King of all days, so so highly exalted. Glorious in heaven above. Humble king, till the earth will create. All for love sake, be king of all. Here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You're all together lovely, all together worthy. All together wonderful to me. I'll never know how much it costs to see my sins upon that ground. I'll never know how much it costs to see my sins upon that ground. So here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You're all together lovely, all together worthy. All together wonderful to me. Here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You're all together lovely, all together worthy. All together wonderful to me. You're all together lovely, all together worthy. All together wonderful to me.
Praise the Lord. Jesus, amen. Hallelujah, our God is worthy, hallelujah. Praise the Lord, our God alone is worthy to be worshipped. [speaking foreign language]
Praise God this evening, hallelujah. The soul says, "Our Lord Jesus is..." Hallelujah, changing God is the Lord, hallelujah. Praise the Lord, hallelujah. We are proud enough to worship this God this evening. Hallelujah, the Spirit and truth. And let us thank God for this time, hallelujah. The preparation of the day of the study. [speaking foreign language] [speaking foreign language] Let us pray, hallelujah. Let us spend some time in prayer, hallelujah, for the blessing of this evening meeting, hallelujah. [speaking foreign language] Let us seek the face of God, hallelujah. The servant of God is going to be discerned us, hallelujah. Praise the Lord, hallelujah. We hope you have a wonderful time, hallelujah. In the presence of God, let us seek in the face of our Lord this evening. Let us pray that God will make this evening an unforgettable, high opportunity, a moment in our lives, hallelujah. Praise the Lord and let God stand be glorified in and through all those who disagree that is going to be done from this place, hallelujah. Let us pray that the Holy Spirit shall guide the servant of God, hallelujah, to speak from the word of God, powerfully inspired, the Holy Spirit, hallelujah. Hallelujah. [speaking foreign language]
Praise the Lord. [speaking foreign language] I greet each and every one of you who are here this evening in the name of Jesus, I greet each and every one of you. This is a very wonderful, exciting evening we have in the presence of God. This evening we have, we have long awaited to have this evening, this special fellowship, special meeting here. We planned it a couple of weeks before, but it was God's will that on November 5th we have to have Pastor Bob Cook here and we have this fellowship. And I thank God for making this evening possible for each and every one of us. Pastor Bob Cook is over here, he also decided very much to be with us and God has made this possible for him also this evening. And we thank you Pastor for taking your time and coming over here and we are so excited. We would like to say a word of greetings to Pastor Sean and these five planet who are over here. Pastor Sean is passing the valium in terms of God and we had a wonderful time of fellowship many times this evening. Even though the land is not very well, but see, but what of them came, you know what is the situation they are going through, but still thank you very much for making this evening, God bless you. He is the grandson of Cookside, the great man of God, Robert of Cook, who came to our land, India, especially to the land of Kerala as a pioneer Pentecostal pastor and spent all of his life in that land to bring many people to faith and to extend the fire of the Holy Spirit to the land of Kerala and many places, leading many people to Christ. So Joichan had the privilege of meeting Pastor Bob's dad, George Cook, Kuchuside, you know, Peter Reprana, George Cook. He was a grand ancient that time when Roy and Joichan all proper, so family went and meet him. And Pastor Bobby is son of George Cook. There are a lot of memories, there are a lot of things to be, we have to acknowledge to this family, especially to his dad and father. They are the very person why our Kerala carerula Pentecostal is watching them all. If only they were teaching them, and then I could have listened to them for a while. But the most vicious was all, all got up and did it, no, they are fine, they are still doing it. So I'm not going to go to the top of it, I'm still, they were very huge. I'm praying for the Lord. I'm praying for the Lord. In one way or another. This evening, I was talking to Pastor Bob. In one way or another, the congregation over here, especially selectors of what believers, all of us, in one way or another, we are indebted to this family, especially to Pastor Robert of Cook. And every day, I'm praying. I'm praying for the Lord. I'm praying for the Lord. I'm praying for the Lord. And the grandparents are our parents. My little government, the father of the Lord. The grandfather, the uncle. Actually, later, I do it. Robert of Cook, he does a worship. I'm praying for the Lord. I'm praying for the Lord. So I request Joachim to come forward and then speak his heart this evening. I thank God for this wonderful evening. we as a family, we had to propose to go to Grand Junction and meet Pastor Bob Cook's dad, George Cook. And that time, Pastor George shared about his family, especially about his children, about his son and daughter. From that time onwards, I had a great desire to meet Pastor Bob Cook and we had the opportunity to call and talk over the phone a couple of times. But after that, sometime I lost that number and we could not be in touch for a long time now. I have the opportunity to talk to his uncle, Alex Cook, also. So I had a great desire to meet him and I thank God for making my great desire fulfilled, especially with regard to this church and having this evening over here. I thank God for this opportunity. I would like to share how my forefathers came to this faith and I would like to share about that in a few words. My family heritage goes back to almost 700 years and our family is almost 200 families gathered together and now living in this place called Madhata in Kerala. And we were living there and we were from the Eastern Orthodox Church background. That was our church background. The history of my family goes back to 700 years back. The whole region was full of Hindus and they wanted a Christian young man to purify their oil for their rituals. And in that way, they brought a Christian young man, 700 years back, and his family to our place. And in that way, the Christian heritage comes down to my place. So a stand by all these Hindus, they scattered over to different places and this place became full of Christians. That is, this Eastern Orthodox Christians and this whole area was filled by her followers. he was in the church background, that Eastern Orthodox background. And he got some evil tap on his body and between his, the age of 22 and 23, sometime between that age, he died, he passed away. That time, my grandfather was very young. The same evil power began to attack my grandfather about the age of 20 when he became. He was so scared that he also will die like his father. But he had great desire by looking at the face of his children. He wanted to live more with a great desire. He used to pray and he used to do all the rituals in that church background to get rid of this evil power. That time, a news came to the ears of my grandfather that Cookside, that is Pastor Robert of Cook, is coming to that place and to preach the gospel. And he heard that news. Robert of Cook, he came to that my place and he was preaching under a big jackfruit tree and he gathered people under that tree and he was preaching the gospel over there. So there was strict order from the church, from the Eastern Orthodox Church, that no one should go for his gospel meetings. So my grandfather, he had a great desire to hear the gospel. So he stood afar in the darkness, away from the crowd, and he was hearing the gospel. While he was preaching the gospel and he said, "There is a man standing afar in darkness and he has great desire to live." And he is, his life is in danger, but he has great desire to live. So if he comes in front of me and I will pray for him and he will be healed. That is what Pastor Robert of Cook said that night. he ran towards this place where the meeting is going on and he asked the pastor to pray for him. so his grandfather, David Abbot, he ran towards that place and Robert of Cook prayed for him and he got healed completely and he got rid of that evil power. From that day, that time, he was just in his twenties and he lived long age. He died in 1970 to a date of 76. That's much years. And he followed Jesus from that way onwards and he passed the direction of his generation and of his grandchildren. I also got the privilege to worship this Lord and follow my Lord Jesus Christ. My grandfather was a miracle man and he lived that way all his life. Just like Robert of Cook, my grandfather also was a miracle man. A lot of miracles have happened in his life and I also got the opportunity to witness many of those during my lifetime. I thank God for giving me that opportunity to follow Jesus. I also lean on that faith. I thank God for that. Thank you, Joachim. God bless you. Thank you for that wonderful short testimony sharing about Pastor Robert of Cook. I would like to give a minute to Pastor Sean to greet Pastor Robert of Cook as he is the senior pastor of Valium Church. God bless you.
Hello, everyone. We're honored to be here. As a matter of fact, I was teaching MIP, which is the Step Up for Licensed Ministers in the Church of God and we were talking about cross-cultural ministry. You're supposed to teach it. And I said, "We're not going to really talk about this." They said, "Why?" I said, "We do this all the time." I said, "We get to be with Salem and different things." So, you know, there's a lot of churches who don't get that. When I went to school in Cleveland and the seminary, you know, there was a lot of people who didn't have that opportunity. But it's an honor to be here, as a matter of fact, because as I grew up, you know, learning, I didn't, I got saved in '22 and read the Like a Mighty Army and your grandfather is throughout that, you know. And I just want to say, it's amazing to me to see this congregation in the sense of this. We don't think about the effect that we have when we start. And when your grandfather went over there, you guys may not know about the Church of God in the sense, we weren't very big when his grandfather went to. Am I right about that? Pastor Cook? I mean, we were very small in Appalachia, which is in the middle of nowhere, really. And his grandfather had the heart to go to India and preach. And I got to talk to a few people about it. And I think it's amazing if we let God do what he's doing to see that you're here because his grandfather went to India. Right? Amen. And so, for me, it's a great privilege to be able to be here, to even be able to hear you. Your family had such an effect. And when I got saved, I went to a church that was very much a World Missions church and we gave a lot to World Missions. And just, it's an honor for me to be able to be here and be able to hear you speak because I remember reading those stories as I was going through, to get my license. And I thought to myself, "Those are great men of God." I don't want to go to foreign countries, but those are great men. It wasn't called to. I love World Missions and I love, I love people who go, but it's a great call. It's, amen. And, you know, like Pastor Vargas was saying, it's such a Hindu, there were so many Hindu faiths there that to go there was dangerous. It wasn't just going there and go. And so, I want to say to you, it's an honor for me to be able to be, hear your stories and be able to come here to preach. So, thank you so much and I'm honored to be here.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you so much, Pastor. Thank you so much. God bless you. Now it's time to hear from God's Word. But before Pastor Bob, Bob Cook will come forward and share from God's Word, I would like to introduce him. Roy Burg is our church secretary. We'll do a lot of introduction for him, who he is and obviously what he's doing and all those stuff. So I request Roy to come forward and formally introduce Pastor this evening.
Praise the Lord. It's an honor for me to stand here to introduce Dr. G. Robert F. Cook, Jr. As many of you know, he's the grandson of Robert F. Cook, Jr., Robert F. Cook, the missionary to India. And we're blessed to have you here tonight. And I just want to share a family photo of him and go over some of the details. His oldest son, George, who's on the left, is actually a pastor here in Grand Junction at the Assembly of God. And his son, next son, Jeremy Cook, is actually a pastor in Kenya. Amazing. And also, his daughter Jenna is working as a church staff in Birmingham, Alabama, with her husband as well. All together, the, all three of their children are working in the ministry. So carrying out the legacy of Robert F. Cook. And they're blessed to have nine grandchildren. And believe it or not, now this is his 50th year of ministry. He started his ministry in 1972 as a youth pastor in California. And then he became a pastor. He pastored many Assembly of God churches in Utah, even in Boulder, there's an Assembly of God church there and in Grand Junction as well. And then Dr. G. Robert Cook, Jr. became the district superintendent for the Assembly of God in Colorado, Utah. Currently, he's leading the senior dulcet office for the Assembly of God in Springfield, Missouri. And him and his wife, Sharon Cook, they've been married 52 years. It's amazing. They've, together, the church, they're church relationship directors for Mercy Ships, which are hospital ships in Africa. And so, he's blessed to have him here. And like I was saying, I still remember meeting your father, George, in Grand Junction. I couldn't believe he spoke better than all y'all on the beat. And so, it's an honor to have you here. And so, we welcome you from Salem Church of God. And thank you.
Good evening. I'll say it again. Good evening. It is wonderful to be here with you tonight. It is an incredible honor for me to be at Salem Church of God. I am so grateful that in God's marvelous plan, he placed my grandparents in India. And that is why I am standing in front of you today. Stotrum. That's the only word I know anymore. I want to thank Pastor Benson Abraham for allowing me to be here and to speak to his congregation. And I also want to say a huge thank you to Brother Vargas Mathai for making the initial contact with me about coming today. I do greet all of you in the powerful and matchless name of Jesus Christ, our Savior and Lord. He is our baptizer and our healer. And he is our soon coming king, amen. And I believe that we have a picture here of Cookside, Robert F. Cook. And on the far left is my grandmother, Bertha Nellie Cook. And the little guy right in front of my grandmother is my father, that's George Robert Cook. Yes, and then there's Blossom at the top and then there's Alex and Paul. And I will tell that story tonight, but even more so tomorrow morning. And now, I realize I've been told tonight that after I speak, you're able to eat. So the only thing between you and the food is me. And of course, Pastor Abraham. And I give Pastor Abraham permission, if my message is not very good, you can make it what it needs to be. It is such a joy to be with you here tonight. I want you to know that I've taken this responsibility of preaching God's Word tonight at this church very serious. I've been asking God to direct me as I prepare and study. So I'd like you to turn with me in your Bibles to Acts, Chapter 20. I do not know if the text that I'm going to read tonight was one of the favorite texts of Cookside. But I believe it exemplifies what his life was all about. Acts, Chapter 20, verses 22 through 24. And now compelled by the Spirit, I am going to Jerusalem, not knowing what will happen to me there. I only know that in every city, the Holy Spirit warns me that prison and hardships are facing me. However, I consider my life worth nothing to me if only I may finish the race and complete the task the Lord Jesus has given me, the task of testifying to the gospel of God's grace. I titled my message tonight and tomorrow, "What Does It Mean to Make Jesus Our Lord?" What does it mean to make Jesus our Lord? All of us are here tonight because a short, bald, Polish-American man made Jesus his Lord. And I challenge all of you here tonight, Jesus wants to be your Lord. So what does it mean to make Jesus our Lord? First, let me give you some context for these verses. The Apostle Paul is ending his third missionary journey. He has traveled all over the area that we call the Mediterranean. Establishing churches, preaching the gospel. But also enduring persecution and beatings and spending time in jail. But also enduring persecution and beatings and spending time in jail. Paul and his associates are sailing down the west coast of what is now called Turkey. And Paul decides he wants to meet with the elders from the church he established in Ephesus, a few miles inland. So they dock the ship they're in and they arrange a meeting with the Egyptian elders who traveled by land to the coast. These verses are part of what Paul shares with the group. If you read this entire chapter, and I hope you will, you can sense the emotion in this meeting. Because Paul shares with them a few verses after our verses that it is his opinion that he would never, they would never see his face again this side of heaven. The Apostle Paul shares foundational truths about key spiritual attitudes that I believe all Christians need to carefully consider. Here is point number one in my message from verse 22. When I make Jesus my Lord, number one, I am no longer in control. Let me say that again. When I make Jesus my Lord, it means I am no longer in control. Paul said, "I am compelled by the Spirit." The Greek word actually means bound or tie up. Paul is intimating that he, in effect, has made himself a slave, a love slave to Jesus. Lordship means Jesus is in control of my life. We make Him the boss, the leader, the captain of our lives. And this is for all ages, not just for the young people. I'm glad we have young people here tonight. How many of you besides myself are young people? I'm only 72. I'm just getting started. Sometimes we think making Jesus our Lord is only a message for the young. It is a message for all ages. You see, it's one thing to trust Jesus as your Savior. It is another step to make Jesus your Lord. Now I ask you this question tonight. Is it hard to make Jesus control, to give Jesus control of our lives by making Him Lord? Absolutely. It is difficult for the young, it is difficult for the old. And it is especially difficult for people who need to control everything. How many of you are sitting near someone who likes to control everything? No, you don't need to raise your hand. Paul the Apostle uses these words. He said, "I'm going to Jerusalem, not knowing what will happen to me there." So why is it frightening to make Jesus our Lord? Because He doesn't always tell us exactly what He has planned for us. Let me say that again. Because He doesn't always tell us exactly what He has planned for us. Now I must tell you that the fear of the unknown kept me from making Jesus my Lord as a young adult. I came from a missionary heritage, you already know that. And the fear of the unknown, in my heart, I felt that if I said yes to Jesus, He would immediately send me to India. Now you see, not only my father's parents were missionaries to India, my mother's parents were missionaries to India. So both my mother and father were born and raised in India. And I just knew that my parents were praying, "Oh God, send one of my children to India." And it might as well be our oldest son, Bob. But the problem was this. I hated snakes. My mother and father would always tell us stories of the snakes, the pythons, and the cobras. I remember hearing the stories and inside saying, "Oh God." But I'm so thankful that one day, over 53 years ago, I felt the Lord simply asking me to follow Him wholeheartedly. In that moment, my fears melted away. And I've followed him ever since. No, He didn't send me as a missionary to India. I'm thankful for the three times I have been able to visit India. But I must tell you that I still hate snakes. Fear of the unknown can keep us from making Jesus our Lord. And if you happen to be in this church tonight and you've not made Jesus your Lord, let me encourage you to do so. It's the best decision you can make with your life. Yes, it can be a struggle with our flesh because He wants to be in control. And He wants to lead our lives. But I've found, dear friends, that He, the God of the Bible, can be trusted. So point number one again, when I make Jesus my Lord, I am no longer in control. Now let me come to point number two from verse 23. When I make Jesus my Lord, it means hardships are not only possible, they are certain. The Holy Spirit warned Paul that prison and hardships were facing him. I say it to you again, church, hardships are not only possible, they are certain. You may say, "But aren't we a Pentecostal church? Don't we believe that the Lord can heal our bodies?" Yes, we believe that and we pray for the sick. And some may say, "Pastor, why do you feel that because Paul suffered, it means that we may have to endure hardships?" Let me just remind you of a couple of things. Number one, the New Testament is filled with references to God's process of Him building character in us. In fact, Paul writes in the Book of Romans that difficult times build perseverance. Perseverance builds character. And character builds hope. Paul also wrote to the Corinthian church about how he, Paul, experiences when he experiences his personal weaknesses, then he is strongest in Christ. The Bible is filled with references to God's people going through difficult times. The second thing is that the Bible clearly teaches that we are in a battle. It is a spiritual battle between good and evil. Between the God of the Bible and the forces of darkness. There is a war going on, a spiritual war. And we can see it clearly in our world, can't we? It's a war for the souls of men and women. And there is a war going on in each one of us. War between the flesh and the spirit of God inside of us. You see, the Bible teaches that when a person surrenders to the lordship of Christ, our enemy, the devil, in effect, will declare war on us. We are indeed in a spiritual war. My friends, sometimes things happen in our lives for which we will never have answers this side of heaven. Yes, I am a Pentecostal preacher. I believe in the healing power of Almighty God. I believe that nothing is impossible for the Lord our God. He is the God of the impossible. But I also know this, men and women. Things occur in our lives. Tragedies and accidents. Illnesses and death that make no sense at all. Many years ago, when I was a teenager living in Grand Junction, I was part of a wonderful Pentecostal church. Our pastor's name was Robert Northrup. He came to pastor our church when he was in his mid-30s. He had a beautiful wife and five wonderful children. But a few years after Pastor came to our church, he was diagnosed with cancer. We prayed for our pastor. We anointed him with oil, time after time after time. People were praying for our pastor around the world. We had healing evangelists that would come to our church, anoint our pastor with oil, and pray over him. We believe that God can heal our pastor. And we also believe that it made no sense for our pastor in the pride of his life to be taken from us. Have you ever argued with God? To us, it made no sense that our pastor would have cancer. We prayed and we believed. But in 1972, at the young age of 41, our pastor, Robert Northrup, stepped into the presence of Jesus. Years later, I was serving as a pastor at that same church. And oftentimes, I would go to the same hospital where Robert Northrup lay. And I would walk by the same room where Robert Northrup passed away. It made no sense to our congregation. We were devastated. A beautiful wife and five young children. His only son was named Gary. He was 15 years of age. None of the children had their father at their wedding ceremonies a few years later. But I'm here to tell you today that Regina Northrup is still living for Jesus. That was his dear wife. She is in her late 80s. I'm also here to tell you that all five of those children are serving God and their grandchildren, and their children are serving God today. Robert Northrup's only son, Gary, pastors the largest Descendants of God church in the state of Colorado in Fort Collins. I haven't figured it out. I haven't figured it out.
Yani, oru, kadiyadu, chudin, chapor, manisla, ilya.
It still doesn't make sense to me in my mind.
Endu, kadiyadu, kadiyadu, enda, manisla, yani, kadiyadu, varanjal, kadiyadu.
When I go to Grand Junction, Colorado, to visit the graves of my parents, George Roberts and Miriam Cook,